The place we'd like to generally start is to offer the candidates a chance to explain what motivated them to run, and in particular, what difference you think it would make for the community if you were serving on the council instead of somebody else.
How long an answer do you want on that one?
About a minute.
A minute? A minute.
Keep it fairly short.
You know, I'm running because I'm concerned that a disconnect has arisen between City Hall and the values and priorities of residents, and particularly around the issues of land use and its impact on quality of life and the character of the city, a little bit in the area of finances, right? And I'm really concerned that particularly now, I think we're making decisions in real time here that are going to affect how Palo Alto looks for years and years to come. And it's very important that the residents and the City Hall be back in alignment. And so that's why I'm running, is to get that alignment back.
So can you explain on what you mean by disconnect in values?
There is a lot of trajectory in the city, in City Hall, to pursue the dense urban environment of a place like San Francisco or San Jose. But if you looked at the trade-offs that would have to come with that in terms of livability, so traffic, parking, neighborhood congestion, impact on city services, school enrollments, and so forth, you know, I think most residents would not make that trade-off, okay? And I think that's a really important thing because we're rewriting the comprehensive plan. We're continuing to pursue a development trajectory that extends us in the direction that we're going. We continue to put up buildings that bring in 200, 300 jobs but house eight adults, for example, right? And so I think we need to reconcile those two things, and I think everybody needs to get back in alignment. I'll see how we're going to redo the comprehensive plan if the city's over here and the residents are over there, for example.
Which members of the City Council do you feel are pursuing a dense urban environment?
Well, I don't think it's specifically the City Council. I think there's, I think you have to consider the staff and particularly some of the commissions, right? I think very clearly the Architectural Review Board has ideas on, you know, what kind of projects we should do. I think there's a lot of momentum on the Planning and Transportation Commission to densify and to put up these kinds of projects, right? I think there is some in the staff, right? Although my impression is the staff is, they're just trying to do the right thing and make everybody happy, right? And then the council, you know, the council members that have tended to vote for those kinds of, sort of more in favor of densification have tended to be folks like, you know, Klein and Shepard and Price. And the ones who voted against those kinds of things have typically been Schmidt and Holman, right? And, you know, Pat Bird sort of comes and goes in the middle. So I think that's the, I don't think you can, I don't think you can look and say the council wants to do it. I think it's sort of a, I think it's broader than the council.
Well, given that there have been only a few PCs approved and everything else has been essentially to the zoning and to the city's rules.
Right.
How would you have been able to vote any differently had you been on the council?
Right, right. So I think, I think the PC thing is only one, is only one piece, right? I mean, as you guys know, you know, a whole smorgasbord of other kinds of exemptions and bonuses and transfer development rights, there's a whole infrastructure of this stuff has been developed in the last few years, right? And so if you look at the downtown university corridor, I mean, I mean, most of those buildings are zoned for an FAR of like 1.2, okay? But if you look at how they actually are, it's more like three, I mean, the whole downtown corridor is at an FAR of three, okay? And it's because of sort of the other stuff that's gone around, gone around. And some of the stuff comes from the state, and there's not too much you can do about it, and some of the stuff comes from us. But what's happened is the intent of the zoning, you know, hasn't been followed, right? You know, even if the letter of it has. And so, yes, so things that follow the letter of the zoning but not the intent don't come to council and don't get voted on. And I think that's one of the fundamental changes we need in the city, is the council needs to get, you know, very proactive about getting control of this stuff and setting a vision for where we need to go. And if the answer is, we need to go and adjust the existing zoning to compensate for some of these things that have arisen, so that we get back to the original intent of the zoning, then I think we need to do that, okay? I realize that that's not easy, right? I think, you know, a lot more people are happy with upzoning things than they are with downzoning things, right? But I think it's possible. I think Pat Bird is somebody that's been calling for this for, you know, the last year, and I think, I think we need to go down that path. I don't think it's just PCs. I think, you know, you can do a lot of stuff without having to go to a PC that isn't beneficial to the community.
And would you seek to implement those changes to the incentives and rules that exist in advance and separate from the comprehensive plan project?
Comprehensive plan project. So I think the existing comprehensive plan that we have is a pretty good document, right? I think it's lasted well, and my opinion is, in its current form, it'll last us another 20 years with minor modifications. So I don't believe we need a radical overhaul of the comprehensive plan. And this is actually one of my concerns, because if you look at, if you, I actually, I actually read far too much of it, right? And if you look at, for example, particularly the draft update coming out of the Planning and Transportation Commission, there's a lot of stuff in the draft update that has changed, right? I mean, it's all buried in detail, but, you know, the thrust of it is different from the current comp plan. In the current comp plan, you know, people criticize it for saying that, you know, you can find anything you want inside it. And there is some truth to that, but if, but overall, it's very clear what the thrust and the intent of the comprehensive plan is. Palo Alto should be a, you know, a residential town with a reasonable amount of commercial activity so long as it doesn't impact, you know, the residential character of the city. And if you look at a lot of stuff in the draft update, you know, it's changed. And one of my favorites is in the land use element, and I'm going to try to quote this exactly, but it's, you know, maintain the scale and character of, this is in the original plan, right? Maintain the scale and character of the city, okay? Avoid uses which are overwhelming to their lack of appeal and change of character. Those aren't exactly, they're pretty close. In the draft update, that language is excised and replaced with, you know, a policy of connect new development to neighborhoods. I don't know exactly what that means, but it's radically different. So for example, the J. Paul building, okay, you know, would conflict directly with the first one, and it'd be perfectly, perfectly allowable under the second one. So my two bits on the comp plan is, I like the spirit of it now. I think a minor update is what we should do to it. However, as a California city, or as a charter city, obviously, we don't have to follow our own comp plan, the zoning doesn't have to follow our own comp plan and so forth. So I think you got to deal with both those things. I mean, I think, I think we ought to follow the comp plan, not overhaul it, right? But, but so, I think your question was, do we need to change zoning independent of the comp plan process? I see those things as linked. I think we need to validate that where we want to go as a city is consistent with the existing comp plan, or not, right? Okay? And if it is, then we need to have the zoning reflect that.
So if you're elected, you would not initiate any changes to the various incentives and exemptions that are built into our zoning code?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
And you would await the process of the comp plan?
No, I would, you know, I would immediately go to look how we can revert to the existing zoning, sorry, the existing zoning intent. I mean, the plan of record is the plan of record until you got a new plan of record, and the current plan of record is the existing comprehensive plan. Currently, the zoning actuality doesn't follow our zoning intent, so I would go immediately onto the zoning, back to zoning intent, and particularly, particularly in certain areas of the city. So I think there's an urgent need to do that right now in the California Avenue area, okay? I mean, I mean, you folks are in the middle of this, right? The draft California Avenue plan calls for a radically different character of this area of the city than exists right now. I don't think, I mean, that's the kind of thing that should go to a public referendum, right, almost, right? I mean, there should be a broad dialogue in the city about that. It shouldn't get shoveled into a, shoveled into a, you know, sort of thick documents.
What would be the question that you'd pose in a referendum about California Avenue development?
I don't know, I should, I should, I should backtrack a little bit on that. I don't know if it's literally possible to do a referendum on the California Avenue specific plan. I think, what I mean is, because I said that wrong, what I mean is, it's an issue of such gravity that it should be a broad, open discussion, right? And the whole community should have an opportunity to weigh in on it as opposed to, you know, three planning commissioners do it.
So is what you're suggesting...
Actually, I think, I'm hoping that this election, I was hoping for a while that this election would actually be that referendum, right? I mean, broader than California Avenue.
So I want to make sure I understand what your approach is. You're saying that the underlying zoning is deceptive because of all of the various exemptions and ways in which a property owner can obtain more square footage, more development capacity. So is your, is your thinking that you would want to lower the base zoning and retain the various incentives that are aimed at doing things like seismic renovation, those kinds of things?
Right, right, right.
Or are you feeling like the better approach is to sweep away a lot of these incentives and just stick with the core existing...
Right, right. Well, I think we should sweep away a lot of the incentives, but the issue is, we can't sweep away all of them, because some of them come from Sacramento, and we can't do anything about those.
But the seismic, for example, doesn't, that's, the city decided it wanted to create a real incentive for owners to run, to seismically upgrade their buildings.
Yeah. You know, I think that, I would like to get rid of, I mean, I would like to get rid of that kind of incentive, right? It's a distortion, right? I mean, if what we want is people to seismically upgrade their buildings, then let's create an incentive that focus on the seismic upgrade of the building and doesn't have these externalities and ramifications of other kinds of buildings. I mean, maybe we need to pay people for that or something like that. But I think tying it to land use in other parts of the city, which I think is a really, really central issue for our town right now, because, you know, we have a finite amount of land, and that is the most valuable thing we have in Palo Alto. So tying other kinds of things to how we use land seems to me like a real, it's a, you don't want to go there kind of policy. So yeah, I would get rid of it, and I would try to replace it with something else.
So let's follow up a little bit about state mandates, and I want to ask you about ABAG.
ABAG.
And the pressures that that's putting onto the city. What would, what stance would you take as a City Council member towards ABAG?
So here's my take on ABAG, okay? I think, so first of all, and I think it's very fundamental, right? I think the central challenge facing Palo Alto is to maintain the character of what we like about Palo Alto in the face of immense, excuse me, sorry about that, I should have turned this off before I got in here, in the face of immense regional and economic pressures, okay? One of the key things is, you know, I think this is probably controversial, but it shouldn't be, how many people should live here, right? How many, how much should we grow and how fast, right? I mean, I don't think, I mean, how much more housing should we add? I don't think the answer is zero. It's obviously not infinite either, right? But we don't really have a number for that, right? We should have a number, and it should be based on our resources and our capacities and the size of our city, and our schools, and our city services, and so forth, right? Okay? We should figure that out ourselves, right? ABAG tries to give us that number, okay, without regard to any of those things. And in fact, it's almost like they're proud that they don't take into, they don't take any of those things into advance. I think that's a real problem for the city. I think it's, other cities are grappling with this too. It's a real problem for Palo Alto, and I think we need to get out from under ABAG, okay, and take charge of this ourself, okay? Now, what happens if you get out from under, if you, if you go away from ABAG? One is you lose a few million dollars in transportation funding, okay? You know, I think, I am concerned about how the city spends money, but I think that money has too many strings attached, and we should try to get, we should, we should not, we should not seek it, right? The other is the possibility that, you know, we might get sued, right? So for example, you know, Menlo Park, I don't think Menlo, my impression is Menlo Park didn't sort of deliberately try to poke ABAG in the eye, they just, they just didn't pay any attention, and, you know, and so they got in trouble that way, right? I think the problem we have with ABAG is fundamentally a long-term problem as opposed to a next-year problem. So ABAG says that we need to add another 8% of housing to the city by the year 2022, okay? The fact is, I think we can grow 8%, okay? We've already found where that 8% can go, and it's in the housing element, and we can still argue a little bit about this much in North Palo Alto or South Palo Alto and so forth. But 8%, I think we can live with. I think the fundamental issue with ABAG is what happens after 2022, right? Are we going to have to grow 30% in 30 years? Because I think if you grew 30% in Palo Alto, you would have a radically different Palo Alto than, than all of us are used to. So I think the real problem is in eight years. So I think what we need to do relative to ABAG is three things. One, we need to get more serious about exploring the legal avenues of, you know, because they're a Sacramento body and unelected and so forth. One is, I think we got to, need to get a little more deliberate about exploring legal options for this. The second is, I think we need to get together with other communities in the, in the Bay Area who are worried about the same things. Saratoga, you know, Menlo Park, you know, is starting to grapple, obviously, right, and so forth, and work together to try to bring, bring pressure on Sacramento for reform. And then the third thing is, you know, there are some communities in the Bay Area that actually want to increase housing, right? You know, San Jose, Redwood City, and so forth. I think, you know, we should, we should seek the horse trade with those folks, right? So that's my two bits on ABAG, and, you know, I, I think, the good news is, you know, we got several years to do this, right? I mean, the, the real issue comes in 2021, 2022, when the next allocation comes. So I think we should get started right now, right? Seven years will go by fast, okay? But we got time to do this. The problem is, if we ignore it until 2021, then we're going to be behind the eight ball again.
Sure. One of the issues of overdevelopment, of course, is something that you're very familiar with, which is parking and traffic.
Right.
And the City Council has made a lot of strides lately.
Yeah.
Towards addressing these issues, the Residential Parking Permit Program, Transit Management Agency, shuttles, garages, garage technology. Are you satisfied with where the city's headed at this point?
No, okay? We should talk about, let me talk about, I mean, we all know all about parking. I don't want to spend a lot of time on parking, right? Talked to Gennady for years on parking, right? So we all knows, right? You know, it's taken a long, long time. We do not yet have a residential parking permit program, right? You know, I think the direction is good, you know, specifically on the city's plan, you know, they, they kicked down, they kicked the crucial issue down the road of how many, how many permits they're going to, going to sell for the neighborhoods, they kicked that out to next year or something like that. So it's taken a long time, right? But, you know, I hope that we will finally get this kind of thing. Other cities around America, other cities around the Bay Area have done this to protect neighborhoods from commercial traffic incursion and so forth, okay? But we haven't addressed the root cause of the problem, okay? Which is, you know, the massive, sorry, the rapid expansion of commercial development, particularly office development, and the jobs that go with it in this, in this town, right? And so, for example, you know, the City Council says, okay, we'll restripe and bark at Arrow east of, east of, east of 101, and put shuttles out there so that we can put 100 parking spaces there, okay? At the same time, if you look at two buildings down the street from here, 385 Sherman and 260 California, those two buildings, between the, between the two of them, right, are sufficiently underparked that they're going to add more than 100 cars, more than, more than the number in the, in the East Bay shore restrypping, with no place to go. So we're going to take up that with two buildings, okay? If you really want to address these issues, you got to get back into control of, you know, how much development, how much stuff do we want? And so it seems to me like, and this has been true for many years, I've lived in Palo Alto, it seems to me like, you say, who is, who downtown is looking at saying, if we build this here, then we're going to need this much parking and this much capacity in our streets, right? And this much city services, and then we're going to have to build this much housing to supply to house the people that take those jobs, and that means we're going to need this much space in our school, and we're going to need this much park space, and it's all going to work together like that. It doesn't seem to me like we do that, okay? It seems to me like we approach each one of these things tactically on its own, you know, we go, oh, that would be a good thing, and I should make it five feet higher. To the extent that we do studies on these things, you know, the traffic studies are controversial, right? In many cases, they only look at some things, right? It doesn't seem, it's ironic to me that, you know, here we are in Silicon Valley, okay? The global epicenter of system architecture thinking, okay? The home of Intel, Oracle, and Google that are built on this kind of thinking. Doesn't seem like we do it in Palo Alto. I think we should.
So what kind of mechanism would you support, then? Would every single project require this kind of cumulative impact, or are you thinking about one, a one-time, let's sit, all sit down and figure out the...
I think, I think you need both those things. I think you need, I think you need a deliberate plan of how much of this stuff we're going to build, and that the comprehensive plan is sort of supposed to be that, right? Okay? And then I think we need to check that each thing that we built, and we need to make sure that our zoning practices and our development policies and so forth support that vision, and then we make, make sure we conform with it, right? That probably is, seems hopelessly simplistic, but, you know, I mean, it seems obvious that that's how we should do it.
Just to finish up this development part of the discussion, is there a role for the Planned Community Zone? And if so, what changes in it are you advocating?
Super question, right? You know, I think that theoretically, the Planned Community Zone gives the city flexibility to respond to situations that we didn't think of, right? That, you know, didn't meet our criterias and so forth. The problem is that, you know, we have not shown that we can manage them, especially consistently imagine, to produce outcomes that are good for the city. I think we consistently underestimate the costs to residents of the things that, the negative side, and consistently underestimate the public benefits that come from, and in many cases, don't follow up that those public benefits were actually achieved. And so I think that until we demonstrate that we can do that, right, we shouldn't do PCs, right? Maybe the, maybe the, maybe the tap, maybe the, you know, the, maybe the relief valve is we say, okay, we can do PCs, but each one requires a public referendum. You say, if the benefit of the community is so great and so clear, then the voters of Palo Alto will see that and they'll approve it, right? So complicated question, that's kind of my leaning, right?
So just to take a couple of relatively recent PCs.
Yeah.
One, the J.J.N.F. market PC. Were you a supporter of that, or, and now what's your view of how to handle that?
No, I don't think we should have done it.
And that's because?
I think it's oversized, and the negative impacts to the community of that outweigh, outweigh the benefits, and the benefits aren't even going to be achieved, and you have to fault the residents a little bit for, I think the residents had some unrealistic expectations too on that. I mean, as harsh as this may seem, right? The economics of grocery stores have changed significantly in the last few decades, right? It's unclear to me that a J.J.N.F., that is, you know, something that in the, in the form of J.J.N.F. as it was, is going to be economically viable in the, in the 21st century in Palo Alto, right? And I think that's part of the problem, and I think that's why you don't see people rushing to, you know, you know, a land rush of people to try to, to fill that spot. So I think that's an issue too, but, no, I don't think it's, I think we should follow our codes, right? If you don't follow your code, you don't have codes. So I would, I would have, I would have declined that one, because it doesn't meet code.
And the 101 Witten project?
My wife and I opposed that one when it came out. You mean the one that the building is its own public benefit, that one? Right? You know, that one's just wrong on so many, on so many avenues and aspects, I think, you know, absolutely not.
Were there public benefits that you would have felt warranted, that, that building?
You know, again, I think the city consistently underestimates the impact on residents of those kinds of things, and, you know, we get outgunned by the other side on public benefits all the time, so I would hesitate to even go down that path, right?
I wanted to talk a little bit about composting.
Yes, yes.
It's a small, small issue. You know, there's, we have such a spectrum when it comes to composting, from keeping everything local, don't send a single thing away, to working with partners and adopting a regional approach. So I'd just like to know what your views are on that.
The composting, okay. So first of all, you know, I think Measure E has done an immense service for the community, right? I think, the honest to God truth is, I can't remember whether I voted for it or not, right? You know, I didn't, the thing that I didn't like the most about it was, they were going down the path, and, at least initially, of the dry anaerobic technology, and, you know, I was a semiconductor operating guy for 27 years, my business was betting on technology. I hate betting on technology. The dry anaerobic technology, you know, I do remember, I sort of looked at that and go, it doesn't sound completely baked to me, you know? And in fact, you know, after Measure E, they in fact did back off the dry anaerobic technology and went to a much more conventional technology. So, you know, that whole project was to undedicate 10 acres of land, and for a study, Emily, Emily and Enid would remind you, it's a study, they didn't actually do it, you know, to produce a processing plant that would handle solid waste, food scraps primarily from restaurants, right, and yard trimmings, okay? And the current plan, which is to build a wet anaerobic digester on the water treatment plant next door, not the 10 acres, okay? And use that to get rid of the incinerator, okay, which I think is a huge, huge win, right? And the, and the, and pre-process the food scraps so that they can go through the same facility, right? I think that's a great plan. I think everybody agrees with that, you know? If the outcome of Measure E was to get that done, I think Measure E has done the city a great service, right? Peter and all those guys, you know, they did the city a great service. I look at that as 95% of the problem. So 95% of the problem has been solved. What's left, okay, is the yard trimmings, okay? So the yard trimmings probably won't go through the wet anaerobic digester anytime soon. So they're going to have to be composted, right? So the question is, where should they be composted? So today, we truck the trimmings to Sunnyvale, where they get mulched, and then a truck, and they get trucked to Gilroy, and then they get the mulch from, and the compost from Gilroy goes out primarily to the Central, to the Central Valley, right? I mean, a little bit gets used around here, but, you know, we don't, I mean, people in Los Altos Hills may use a little bit of it, but we don't use a lot of it around here, okay? Most of it is for agriculture. And so the question is, and so, my understanding at the moment is that six trucks a week from Palo Alto full of yard trimmings to Sunnyvale, and one truck a week of compost to Gilroy, and then the comp, I'm sorry, of mulch to Gilroy where it gets composted, and then the compost goes to Central. So then the question is, what's worse, okay? Six trucks a week to Sunnyvale plus one to Gilroy, and undedicate, I think they're down to like three and a half acres or something like that in the, of the dump space, right? So what's worse? The greenhouse gas is emitted by those, by those trucks, or getting rid of the open space and the, and the, and doing it here, right? And the economics to me seem like kind of a wash. I mean, it's, it's probably not an exact wash, but it's not obvious that one's going to cost $50 million more than the others, right? So to me, that's a very hard one, because they're both environmental arguments. My wife and I are diehard environmentalists for many, many years, right? You know, I have not made up my mind on that one, right? To me, I mean, if it were, if we're one square foot of open space and 100 trucks a week to Gilroy, okay, then obviously it would go one way, right? And if it were 20 acres of open space and one truck a year, okay, you know, then obviously it would go the other way. This is somewhere in between, so I haven't made up my mind on that one. But the 95% problem, getting rid of the incinerator, getting rid of the solid waste and so forth, that's, I salute the people that worked on that.
There's some people who envision this waste energy plant as kind of a regional thing, so other cities could participate in and make, maybe make the economics a little bit better.
Well, I think that's an interesting exploration, and potentially, you know, changes the balance of how much open space versus, you know, how much benefit and so forth. The energy thing, I hope that would be a good thing. As a, as a professional technology skeptic, I would want some more evidence that there's, that's actually going to be real, right? And how much is going to be real? All this stuff looks good on paper. All this stuff looks good on paper.
Can you explain to us how you would approach the Cubberly planning process at this point with the school district and the city at passing over the future of that lease?
The future of that lease and so forth. Well, my understanding is that, I mean, my impression, okay, is that, you know, pretty much everybody agrees that lease is going to be renewed. And we're arguing about, you know, is it 20 years and how much money and so forth? But I think, but my impression is that both sides are, you know, they're committed to renewing the lease, right? I think the disposition of Cubberly, you know, and, you know, the Citizen Action Committee plan from last year that said it should be a shared thing and there should be a community center and a high school there and so forth. My impression is that although everybody sort of agrees, right? And first of all, I think Palo Alto needs to, I think Palo Alto and the school district need to work really closely together. I mean, the schools are a huge part of Palo Alto. I mean, Ann Duncan told me that the average, the average house price, the added value of a house being in Palo Alto School District is $500,000 per home in the city. I mean, there's 26,000 homes in the city and half a million dollars per home. That's like $13 billion. I mean, there's a huge economic value among all the other benefits having TAUSD here. I'm sure the real assessment's much more complicated than that, right? My impression is that, and I'm sure people will throw rocks at me for saying this, right? Is that the school district is actually kind of waffling about when and how to put a high school there, right? I mean, you know, it's going to cost a lot of money. It's going to take a lot of time, you know? And if you look at the enrollment in our schools, I mean, there's sort of this huge peak, you know, several decades ago, and then a trough, and now we're up, it's sort of, it might be a peak. And if nobody else moved to town, then it would probably drop a little bit, right? And the schools are kind of at capacity now, okay? And so, if enrollment's going to drop, then, you know, maybe we don't need another high school. On the other hand, you know, if we're going to grow 1% a year for the next 30 years, then we're going to need high schools and elementary schools and all kinds of things. And my impression is the school district is kind of, they're trying to be pragmatic about it. And they're saying, you know, I don't really want to, we don't really want to commit to a, you know, commit to what we're going to do here until we sort of get a better idea of, you know, because are we going to be like we were, you know, a few decades ago and schools were half-empty and they were closing down schools and so forth? So, you know, I come back to the importance of actually having some plan and vision, right? Which is, you know, we got to answer the question, right? How many people are going to live in this town, right? Because so many other things flow from that. Do we need another high school? And Cubberly is one of them, but how much city services and infrastructure are we going to need? How much park space are we going to need, you know? You know, all that stuff costs a lot of money, so these are real decisions. I think the city has to really get control of, you know, where's our vision going to come from? It's the city council. The city council's responsible for policy, vision and oversight, right? I think it needs to come from the city council. I think the city council has to decide how big a city are we going to be and what are we going to look like? And the decisions like, you know, what's the ultimate disposition of Cubberly have to flow from that as opposed to, oh, the lease is up next week. What are we going to do, right? So, there's my two bits on Cubberly.
I want to turn our attention to those who are less fortunate amongst us. They often don't get involved or they're not kind of covered in the broader thinking about development and urbanism and all that.
Yep.
First issue is car camping.
Car camping.
This is very important right now. What would you do, if anything, about people living in their cars and the friction with neighbors?
So, I support the car camping ban, right? It's a difficult and challenging issue, okay? Obviously, right? I think, you know, but I'm one of the people who has folks living in their cars across the street and there's sanitation issues and people are wandering around drunk and so forth. So, I understand that picture as somebody that I, my two boys, one of them just graduated from high school, right? The other one's a junior in Pali. And, you know, so I had young kids all the way through those years and so forth. And yeah, I worried about, you know, I worried about. So, I understand where the residents are coming from on this, you know? At the same time, obviously, there's people that can't afford to live here, right? People that have, you know, substance abuse problems and so forth, right? You know, and, you know, if you just turn those people out, you know, people freeze to death, right? And die of exposure and so forth, right? I mean, there's a couple of cases, right? So, you know, that's a very difficult one, right? I think Palo Alto actually does quite a bit, you know, among Bay Area cities for those kind of people, right? So, I think it's a very difficult and challenging issue, but I think you can't have people living in their cars in residential neighborhoods.
So, would you support them living in their cars elsewhere in the city?
You mean like Cubberly parking lot or something like that?
Or something?
You know, I think you, I think, I think you got, I think there's not sort of one size fits all. I mean, there's people that, you know, have serious, you know, being able to function problems. And there's other people that are working poor, right? That, you know, they live in their car because they can't afford to buy a house here, but they work here and so forth and so forth. I think you got to treat those differently, right? And, you know, some places, you know, envision is appropriate for some folks and other programs for others and so forth, right? I don't think car camping is a good idea.
So, because you experienced that on your street, I'm just curious, the role of the police in addressing the behavioral issues without needing to move these cars along?
How do you, what do you mean?
Was that not, why was that not effective in terms of getting the police involved in, you know, drunk, public drunkenness? Being a nuisance?
You know, there's only so many police, you know? I think, you know, police cars aren't going to, police cars aren't going to, they're going to roll a car for somebody defecating in the bushes across the street from somebody's house. I think you need, I think you need a policy approach. And it is a regional issue, right? I mean, it's not just Palo Alto. I mean, you got to look at, you got to work with the other cities, too.
Sure. On the topic of Buena Vista?
Buena Vista? But I'm not allowed to say anything about Buena Vista, right?
You're not allowed to say anything about the?
Go ahead.
Disposition of the financial agreement. But where do you see that property going in terms of the need to? Or is there a need to not displace the families there? What role does the city have to play in that?
So, I think the whole Buena Vista situation is an absolute tragedy, right? And those folks are residents of Palo Alto like anybody else, right? You know, I think it's incredibly ironic that, you know, we're being told to develop affordable housing in Palo Alto. I mean, we're still being told to zone for affordable housing in Palo Alto by A-Bag and so forth. And not that we shouldn't do it, right? But, you know, we're being told to do that. Buena Vista, we actually, that actually is affordable housing, you know? And it's going away and, or it's likely to go away. And, you know, all those regional guys that are like pushing us for this, you know, say, well, that doesn't count, right? I mean, I think that's just incredibly ironic. The Buena Vista situation, I hope very much that, you know, a solution can be reached that allows those people to stay, right? I think it's a huge challenge, right? Obviously, the owner has property rights. I think, you know, the city needs to respect those as well. It's a really, really difficult situation. Obviously, I'd love a solution. I think everybody here at Palo Alto would love a solution that allows those people to stay and their kids stay in school and so forth. I'll say a couple of things about that. One, I go back to the city's zoning, land use policies, okay? You know, we have the highest jobs-housing imbalance in the county, okay? Massive, the massive build-out of jobs-intensive office space, you know, has put pressure on local residential space and rates. You know, if we hadn't done that, you know, maybe that piece of land wouldn't be worth $30 million as, you know, as a big building instead of a trailer park, right? Okay? So, I think you have to fault the city's short-sighted land use policies as having contributed to the situation. The other thing that I would say is that, you know, we should look around the city and see if there are any other potential Buena Vistas waiting to happen, you know? For example, there's parts of Ventura that are dense and affordable at the moment, right? And if we want to apply zoning, right, for those kinds of things, then the time to do it is now, okay? Before it becomes a serious issue as opposed to, you know, jeez, this is going to happen tomorrow. We need to go suddenly rezone this thing as a, you know, as a one-story or two-story, you know, condo-plex as opposed to, you know, something else, right? So, I think, I think we need to get proactive and learn from this and, you know, and not allow it to happen anywhere else in town.
Well, so just to follow up on that, and then we have to wind up here. So, what would you have been urging, had you been on the council, say, 10 years ago, about changing the zoning on the Buena Vista?
Buena Vista, right? Well, you know, I think it's RM15 right now, right? I mean, it seems to me like you could rezone it as a trailer park, right? I mean, if you do it at a point in time that there's not a huge impact on the property value of it and so forth, right? Maybe you could do something like that, right? I certainly don't think the city, well, I'll stay away from that. One of the requests as part of the current project is to upzone from RM15 to RM30, right? So, I think, right, that's one issue, right? So, yeah, I think we should go back and, I mean, if you find something like that, again, I think, I think the city needs to use zoning as a tool for what we want the city to look like. And if we want diversity in the city, if we want more people that work here to live here, right? You know, I think, you know, you need to, we need to proactively apply zoning to get what we want, right?
Well, so what kind of zoning would you apply there to get what you want?
So, 15 years?
Now that it's not going to be a trailer park.
Again, I think, I'm trying to, I'm thinking about Molly Stump's memo here, right? I think for the city to go to a property owner who is on the verge of a transaction, I don't mean Buena Vista specifically. I think the city to go to a property owner who's on the verge of a major transaction and abruptly rezone that property in a radical way, right, is inappropriate. It violates the property rights of the owner, right? I think if you're going to do something like that, it has to be done a long time in advance, right? And everybody has clear notices of what it's going to do. And it probably wouldn't stand up in court anyway if you did it right now.
But I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about what would happen there as a PC, clearly. Similar to Maybell, where the city concludes that certain considerations for additional development are worth it given the public benefit. So, what I'm asking, I'm not asking you to comment on how you might vote on the application that's before the city to close the park. That's not the question. The question is, if you had the opportunity to negotiate a planned community development there, what do you want there? What's your vision? And what are you prepared to give up in the way of additional density to achieve that vision?
You know, my inclination, I hope I'm understanding your question and answering it right, right? My inclination on what the city should do in such a case would lean more towards other kinds of trade-offs than if you do this, we'll give you some slack on land use somewhere else in the city, right? My inclination on that kind of thing would try to find other kinds of exchanges. Money, right? I mean, we'll spend X many dollars from the city coffer, you know, to contribute to this kind of thing, right? That would be, as opposed to trying to horse-trade land for it. I think when we horse-trade zoning for other things, we get into trouble, right?